Okay. While meeting the order, as courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your devices that might interrupt the meeting. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster Incorporated, February 5th of 1819. We gather here at Historic City Hall, originally an estate built in 1842 by Colonel John K. Longwell. The city acquired the building in 1939 and it has since been the venue where the mayor and council conduct the city's business. One interesting fact about Westminster is that in 1936 Westminster played a key role in the founding of the Maryland Municipal League, an organization that created, that was created to support and advocate for Maryland cities and towns. Westminster's leadership helped shape the early mission of the MML, which continues today as a vital voice for local government across the state. The city's involvement highlights its longstanding commitment to civic engagement and municipal innovation. And I know a couple of my colleagues up here at the day have served in various leadership roles within MML. Moving on, the council typically convenes on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Please note that these meetings are open to the public here at City Hall and are also streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We extend our gratitude to the Community Media Center for their partnership in ensuring public access to these meetings. Now we'll begin, as we do every meeting, with allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. Hard copies of the agenda are available here in the front of the room for those in attendance. We have a number of presentations this evening, I believe it's four of them. The first one will be for the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project, and that will be Mr. Jason Steidach. Can you just stand up there and act like Jason? He's the Executive Director of Carroll County Veterans Independence Project.
First off, what we've got here is, I'm talking to spoken to several of you, we've had conversations. I think city councils, mayors, they thank you, or we don't hear it enough, but we're truly fortunate. I'm not a resident of Westminster, even though my address says that, I live so far out that it's... But truly, being the Executive Director of a veterans nonprofit here in Westminster, here in Carroll County, I would not want to be near or in any other municipality. The outpouring of support from many, if not all of you here, the mayor herself, Anne actually serves on our Board of Directors in full disclosure, but it's been wonderful, whether it be last year when we did the first ever Veterans Day Parade, or Mayor Becker was sitting down, he was introducing us, we were having coffee, two months out, and I said, "Hey, we'd like to do a Veterans Day Parade, what do you think?" "Yeah, that sounds great." A little bit later I get a text, "Were you talking this year?" And in two months, and you know, that's a cost to the city, we recognize that. This year you guys had us in there, you bides to do the same. And again, what the veterans, President Shabati coming and being a part of that as a veteran himself, it means a lot. The veterans appreciate that, I think we're gonna, the parade is growing. I think we'll see participation on the sidelines grow more as we go along. The banner program, meaning the fact that not every municipality has the banners up and down Main Street. Y'all don't have to let us do that, you know, it's, and you're fabulous, the parks, the fact that like streets, making that right, streets, the crew, you know, they'll come over, they'll get the banners, they put them up, they take them down, they give them to us, and we'll get on to it. But all of that, it's not just unspoken, because you don't have to do any of that. You don't have to allow us to do what we're doing, and that's not for CCBIP, we're doing that for the veterans. So everything you're doing to help us do that is for veterans. So because of that, I don't want to take up too much time, I will just read one of them. I have what we have put together as a proclamation from the nonprofit for Dr. Mona Becker and then also for the common council. So if you guys will allow me to read the one, I won't read the both, so we'll start with... Honoring Dr. Mona Becker for outstanding service and dedication to the Veterans Independence Project. Whereas the Veterans Independence Project recognizes and celebrates individuals who dedicate their time, talent, and compassion to the betterment of our community and to the lives of those who have served our nation. And whereas Dr. Mona Becker has demonstrated exceptional commitment and leadership through her work with the Veterans Independence Project, a program dedicated to supporting veterans in achieving self-sufficiency, stability, and renewed purpose. And whereas through tireless efforts, Mona Becker has helped provide essential services, resources, and advocacy to ensure that veterans in our community receive the respect, care, and opportunities that they have rightfully earned. And whereas the Veterans Independence Project acknowledges that the strength of our community is reflected in the generosity and dedication of citizens like Dr. Becker, whose actions exemplify the highest ideas of service and civic responsibility. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we recognize and honor those who go above and beyond to uplift and empower others, particularly those who have served in defense of our nation. Now thereby I, Jason R. Seidach, Director of Veterans Independence Project, do hereby proclaim the special appreciation to Dr. Mona Becker, with sincere gratitude from all the veterans of Carroll County.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd love to. And the next one is honoring the Westminster Common Council, because we have a native camp really on, she is a powerful force out there, you know, too. I just appreciate that.
She probably never did one sometimes, trust me.
Thank you. That's our, it's Martin Luther. Jason, thank you for, I mean, it's, thank you, this is so much, and you guys have done wonderful stuff. So the veterans, they admire it, they appreciate it, and I said, "Thank you." They're on the ground, they're there.
And so, this is not so long ago, we were saying, so, so, thank you, thank you all for the service and the care. Okay, so now, proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. These collective efforts are to ensure the city of Westminster continues to thrive as a premier place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, the thing that the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster, by joining the board of municipal government in the clearing November to meet municipal government this month, and the scene of Westminster, adopted this 10th day of November 2025. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25. It's the same Westminster public service as one of the veterans, after 157 years of experience. It also represents a film of government, most directly accountable to its citizens. In the state of Maryland, it's a film, so, we know the government works, month, each November, since 1982. And in the spirit of the annual observance, the city of Westminster serves to foster a greater understanding of municipal government and its residents, we underscore the importance of their informed involvement. And through the careful movements of the municipal facilities and those structures, including streets, sidewalks, pavements, parks, and sports sites, the city creates a vibrant and supportive environment for its residents. Right, so at least, I would ask, uh, you know, to please acknowledge. So this is a new proclamation for municipal government last month. Then that, people. Let's say, if you have something to add. So this is a fact we've seen in the service of municipal government, last month, November 25.
Uh, so this is a new proclamation for kindness worldwide, this is November eighth to fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Whereas kindness is a fundamental human value and an expression of a shared humanity that transcends cultural religious. In this human, humanity's greatest asset, kindness is a choice that should be encouraged, recognized, learned, and celebrated to achieve rather openly and beyond. And kindness brings out the best in ourselves and others, but those who are deeply positive, which is the peace and order in those who have hope, those self-esteem, who foster a sense of connection. And experiencing the following aspects of kindness are learning to provide a greater sense of happiness, optimism, and increased sense of self-worth. We need to reduce feelings of purposeness and depression. And acts of kindness are the learning owners to promote forward meaningful goals by having a look on that, inspiring others to create a wave of positivity. And no act of kindness is too small to make a difference and change your life. And any work we make, our last human, that can change the world through our actions.
Now therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, Mayor of the City of Westminster, join the Common Council in proclaiming Kindness Week Worldwide, November eighth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty five. The recognition of a dedicated week for kindness serves as a reminder to focus on empathy and compassion, fostering a more caring and supportive global community. Adopted this tenth day of November, twenty twenty five. Present to you. Do you like to say a few words?
Yes, we are grateful to be in the city of Westminster. I think it's something that has felt all around. Uh, the, the fact that we started a, a business, a grassroots, uh, small business here in the city. Uh, and then we're able, because of the generosity of the people of the city, uh, then started a nonprofit to also inspire kindness, not only in ourselves, but especially in our kids. Um, so we're grateful for the partnership that we have with Kindness Week Worldwide, for the, for the um, citation that you've just given us, the proclamation, uh, and the ability to work with you, the city of Westminster, to make us, uh, make our world a little prouder.
And thank you all for all completely buying into this. This is just making it up as we go along and you all have said, yeah, this sounds like a pretty good idea to go ahead and do. Um, we have a meeting with the Orioles. Um, we would love to, uh, bring some Be Kind Signs to the stadium and, you know, um, and, and get them on board, um.
We're Westminster.
I am, I'm, I'm, these, these city halls, these town halls are being held all over Maryland. I've been making the trek and sitting in there and, and, and getting connected to, to people. Um, we've been invited to, um, Center for Brooks, Maryland Day festivities, but um, just to sit there and explain what we're trying to do. We're, we're, our, our, our goal is every sixth grader in the state of Maryland, every year, paints a Be Kind sign. We've got the domain name for the Maryland Kindness Project, the website still needs built, but, um, that, that's where we're going with this.
Thank you. I, I will say every time I go to an event, um, there is a kind, there's a small bag of Be Kind Signs that is dropped off on my porch. Oh, instructions to hand them out to people and then a couple extra. I'm just giving to hand out to people randomly where we're at. So, um, yeah.
We appreciate.
Take a little bit of Westminster with me. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on. Uh, McDaniel College, uh, has, uh, it's been a tradition for a number of years now under the leadership of President Jaskin, where McDaniel sent the representatives to the council meetings during the school year to foster a close and meaningful relationship with the city. Matter of fact, we were all just invited up there this past week where we got to spend some time, uh, in the beautiful, uh, I guess it's a, uh, what was the library? And then, yeah, I was thinking more of the whole stadium. What, what do they call it? They were all, the whole Brit suite, which was very nice. Um, so this evening we have Jeremy Shepherd, who's the athletic director, kind of fitting that we were in your facility just the other day. Um, so if you'd like to say anything, Jeremy, you're welcome. I'm glad you're here.
Sure. Thank you for having me. I appreciate you giving me just a couple minutes. Give me a little update on athletes happening, um, on the Hill. So I'm getting, I'm getting from you guys very often, so I thought I'd give you a quick update. The first one is, um, just thank you for the community's support for the Trick or Terror event that we held a few weeks ago. Had a great turnout, over two hundred kids, um, showed up and attended that event. And I think we gave out over a hundred bags of candy, um, from our sports team. Um, so that was really great.
My grandkids ended up with a couple of them.
I bet. I bet. It's just a really fun event. So we always appreciate the sport. It's meaningful to come out for that event. Um, don't know if you're aware, but the track renovations are finally complete. Um, so that is open for the community to use as well as a great dedication ceremony during homecoming weekend, um, in honor of Dr. Richard Clower for that track. So how exciting things happening there. And then just a quick recap from our fall sports season, um, our men's soccer team, um, competed in the Centennial Conference Tournament. They've been selected to compete in the ECAC tournament, but we'll be hoping that contest that someday on campus, um, the thing I want to run, let's come out and score a men's soccer team. Our cross country teams are going into originals this weekend as well. Football, of course, wraps up this Saturday with Gettysburg. That will be a, um, a nice rivalry game. Uh, lots of people will be in town for that as Gettysburg travels very well.
Probably won that one, right?
Right, I'm gonna tell them that, no, sorry. Double our wins total from last year, which would be, uh, fantastic. The first basketball seasons are already underway, uh, with Rebecca Martin Tipoff Tournament, uh, at other places. Weekend, when the basketball team won that tournament, um, so we did very well. And then our men's and women's wrestling teams are also underway. The men's wrestling team just upset, uh, Elizabeth Town was the top ranked team in the country um, this weekend and our women are off to a great start. They won their first immunity this season as well. So thank you for allowing me to give you a little bit of an update on some things happening on the Hill with our athletic programs.
He regrets this hasn't gone on.
He does.
He knows when he stood on.
Yeah, Tommy's ranked, Thomas Mahon is one forty nine way class is ranked third in the country. So we'll see. He's our hope for a national title this year.
Yeah, I know. He's, yeah, he makes for no excitement about it. All right, good. Well, thank you very much, Jeremy. Appreciate you coming. Okay, now we'll move on to actual business. Um, we will consider the approval of previous meeting minutes. This evening, we have one set of minutes to approve the mayor and common council meeting minutes of October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Ms. Gilbert, thank you very much. I have a second from Mr. Peccarero. Is there any discussion related to the minutes? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. This evening, we have six items on the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Peccarero. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and the consent calendar is approved. Now we'll move on to reports, reports from, a report from the mayor, Dr. Beck.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a few things to report on over the last two weeks. On Thursday, uh, October thirtieth, um, myself and the council, we had a tour of the new Wakefield Valley Event Center. Uh, it's a phenomenal project, uh, ready to open for the, to the community, which, which it did. Uh, and I wanted to take a moment to thank, uh, Ms. Abby Gruber, um, and her staff for their hard work from the design and planning, uh, to that day I learned unpacking hundreds of chairs and tables uh, at the event. Um, this is truly a legacy project that will serve the community for decades into the future. Um, on November fourth, I spoke at a student leadership summit at Westminster High School on service and leadership. The Student Leadership Coalition is a group of students who are leaders in high school organizations and clubs that come together and learn leadership skills. I spoke about how past leadership opportunities prepared me for the role I have today and how being a leader in the community is part of the job as mayor. Also on Tuesday, um, November fourth, I served as a panelist on a webinar called, uh, Local Infrastructure Hub, tapping into the drinking water state revolving fund. Uh, on the webinar, I answered questions related to Pure Water Westminster for municipal leaders across the country. Also on Tuesday, November fourth, it was a full day. Um, I greeted attendees at the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area's annual meeting at the newly opened Wakefield Valley Event Center. Seeing the center filled with an event for the first time was truly exciting. Everyone enjoyed the new space and the tours of the Durbin House. And I cannot wait to see future events being held at Wakefield. Uh, on Wednesday, November, um, November fifth, several colleagues, including the great, uh, council members Peccarero and Council, Councilwoman Gilbert, uh, Council President Tony Kavachi and I attended a McDaniel Happy Hour and Tour with President, uh, Dr. Julia Jaskin as our host. We started in the library with the tour of the newly remodeled Student Accessibility and Support Services Center, or SAS, the STEM Center and the Writing Center, all housed on the ground floor of Hoover Library. We then traveled to the Alberton Suite at Gil Stadium to spend some time socializing with several of the college's BPs from Dean. And I'm looking forward to our annual breakfast next week on Tuesday. Um, last but not least, uh, there are only two farmers markets left for the season. Uh, it's getting colder, but you can still find some amazing local products for sale at the farmer's market from eight AM until noon in downtown Westminster. And on the final market, November twenty second, I'm told there will be Clyde sales at the market. So, um, two more weeks to get your fill of that. Right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll now move on to committee reports. We'll start with the Arts Council. Dr. Becker, back to you.
No reports.
Sounds good. Economic and Community Development, Mr. Huff. I now report to you. Uh, Finance Committee, Mr. Peck.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we've got a random, later on the agenda. Finance Committee's been working on, look forward to discussing that, you know, on your new business, uh, and follow up tonight.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, no comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have a report for public safety. Acting Sergeant Kevin Chanati was recognized as the Westminster Police Department Police Officer of the Year for the third quarter for consistently demonstrating exceptional leadership, professionalism, and initiative to the community during this quarter. One example included his handling of a significant police call for service at a local school in an exceptional manner. Communication Specialist Atrice Abdul Idol was recognized as a Westminster Police Department civilian of the third quarter for demonstrating outstanding professionalism, kindness, and composure in her role as a dispatcher. She fosters a calm and steady presence in the communications center. On November fifth, Police Officer First Class Jeffrey Fabry received the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Maryland Law Enforcement Award for, uh, on November fifth in recognition of his proactive enforcement efforts related to impaired dri- uh, impaired driving over the past year. P S, uh, PFC Fabry is assigned to one of Westminster Police, the Police Department's night shift, night shift patrol squads. Right. We'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Peccarero.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. We have not met since the last council meeting, so I have no report.
Thank you very much. Recreation and Parks, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, yes, on Wednesday, October twenty ninth, over seventy people attended and fell for owl at Wakefield Valley Park. Program featured an educational presentation and included a live screech owl, followed by guided hikes. Participants had the opportunity to call here and even spot several barred owls in the natural habitat. It was en- engaging and educational evening for our residents of all ages. Looking ahead, the Parks and Recreation Department, um, is hard at work preparing for the Miracle on Main Street festivities scheduled for Saturday, November twenty ninth. This beloved community tradition will feature a full day of holiday activities for all ages. Residents can visit the city's website or the Recreation and Parks Department's Facebook page for the complete schedule and additional event details. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Dehoff is not here this evening to give a Technology Committee report. Um, so we'll move on to intergovernmental, uh, Mr. Huff.
Mr. President, I will mention that, uh, Secretary Coker of the, um, Maryland Department of Commerce, uh, had, uh, visited Carroll County today. Councilman Peccarero and myself, we attended a breakfast roundtable with him, uh, this morning, which was, uh, a very nice event. Um, and then we also had a lunch with him, uh, later in the day with City Administrator Impulse. And we discussed the fiber project and water reuse and some of the things that, that we have going on here in Westminster and further ways that we can collaborate with, with that department as well as the state in general. And I think it was a, a very, very good visit. Um, and I appreciate everybody's efforts, um, involved in that. And, um, uh, Councilman Peccarero did a wonderful job, um, at that event. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. I just would like to say, you know, you, the two of you just doing fant and outstanding job on that committee. I know Mayor Becker, you participate often in that too. It's so critical. Um, it's a relatively new committee, um, you know, that has been formed in the past couple of years and it has been critically important. And I was speaking to some other local government folks in some other areas and none of them, uh, view what we're doing. It, it is, uh, it's, it's great. I know, uh, I know you guys put a lot of time and effort into it, but it, it pays dividends. I think I speak for the rest of us. We really appreciate it. We'll move on to Council Comments and Discussion. Mr. Peccarero.
Uh, I have nothing to add, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, I think most of my comments, um, Mayor Becker mentioned, uh, so I'm really not going to go over many of them because she already took care of them in her comments.
Great. Mr. Huff.
Um, I'm doing, I will mention as someone who likes to walk around town a lot, I really enjoyed seeing all the lights up on the trees.
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I really look forward to this time of year. Matter of fact, when I was leaving, I said to my wife, well, when I get home, let's take a walk. And she said, it's really cold tonight. I don't know. I might be walking on my own tonight. We'll see.
There's lights in the first city hall. They look great too.
Yeah. It's great.
I know. They make my wife very happy. Happy wife, happy life.
Correct.
So I have just a couple of things. Number one, um, you know, I know, uh, Mr. Sidok already spoke about, I was uh, fortunate enough to be the grand marshal in the Veterans Day Parade. Um, and it was really nice. And I know the staff puts a lot of effort, costs money, but to the Streets Department, the Police Department, everybody else speaks in that. As a veteran, I want to say thank you for the effort and time that goes into uh, the work that you put into making that parade happen. Wasn't phenomenally well attended, but there was a, there was a fair number of people, of people there, but it's really not for them. It's for the vets, um, that are in the parade. And the parade consists almost exclusively of veterans and a couple of bands. So uh, thank you for that. Um, I'll be speaking tomorrow um, as the keynote speaker at Carroll Community College's, uh, Veterans Day Celebration. I was very honored to, uh, to speak there and I hope I do all of you justice. Um, okay, we have.
Mr. Mr.
Yeah.
Sir, could I add one thing in this is council comments?
It's okay, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say, I don't want to upset the rules of the meeting. Uh, I just want to say during, during the proclamations, when we were talking about Small Business Saturday, I did want to recognize both Councilmember Hall and you two, uh, Council President Kavachi, uh, who are both small business owners, uh, in Westminster. Um, I know we don't, they're, they're not a retail business, right? So it's not one that we think, but I did want to recognize that we have two council members here this evening who are both small business owners. Um, and so we should also be celebrating you on that Saturday.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kavachi's business is that small. You guys said. I'm heading to the job I'm bidding on. Okay, uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. We have one this evening. And for that, I'll go to Mr. Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this evening, we have the adoption of Resolution number twenty five ten. The Resolution of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster amending the city's general fee schedule for governmental and proprietary functions of the city with respect to applicable charges for use of the Wakefield Clubhouse and Pavilion. And for this, we have, uh, Administrator, Imols.
Sevans.
Thank you, sir. I am very excited to present to you, um, the Resolution twenty five dash ten. In twenty, fiscal year twenty four, the city entered into a contractual agreement with Wicker Sham Construction and Engineering, Inc. to renovate the Wakefield Valley Clubhouse and Pavilion. A fee schedule is needed in response to the city's investment in the significant improvement to the facility and the opening of the newly renovated space. Proposed fees will help defray the cost of improvements and offset the inflationary, inflationary cost of operating a public facility. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council adopt Resolution twenty five ten, establishing the fees for Wakefield Valley Clubhouse and Pavilion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and get this on the table. I may have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty five ten.
So move with.
Thank you, Mr. Peccarero. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gilbert. Now let's open it up for discussion, Mr. Thank you very much, Ms. Gruber. Now let's open it up for discussion, Mr. Peccararo.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. As, uh, Chair of the Finance Committee, I just wanted to say a few words about this, you know. Um, as, as, as you all know, um, the Wakefield Valley, you know, park has been a project we'd been working on and thinking about for several years now. And as we said when we first acquired the property, you know, it was a legacy project. It's a project that is gonna, you're gonna have an impact on the city for generations to come. And it's probably gonna be one of the most important, long-lasting things that we would do. But it's always important to be careful as we made decisions about it. And one of the biggest decisions we had to make, you know, in addition to all the other uses for it, was what to do with the existing structures there. And we really, as you all recall, Mr. President, we really wrestled with that decision for quite some time. Should we tear it down? Should we try and do something with it? Um, you know, and then we had an opportunity. And the opportunity came because, you know, Ms. Gruber had, you know, uh, you know, gotten us some funds, you know, to build a pavilion out there at the park. Um, when the sighting for that pavilion didn't work out, we were able to move those funds. Um, you know, the state was, uh, was generous enough to allow that. And we were able to move those funds and combine them with other funds we had available. And we went ahead and decided to redo the clubhouse, make the pavilion part of the clubhouse and make it an amenity for, for our community and not just for our community, but I think a regional, uh, amenity that, that people are gonna get a lot of use out of. As, as we looked, as, as we always do, of course, we set rates for people to use city facilities for different purposes. And as we looked at this, we knew it was gonna be a little bit different than a lot of the other facilities we had. Um, I want to thank Ms. Imhols, Ms. Gruber, and, and, you know, those who, you know, worked with them, uh, to help develop, you know, fee schedule for this. And I think one thing that you all notice as you look at it is that it's not, it's not exactly a linear schedule, right? It's not the sort of straightforward, you know, just, you know, one price builds on the others, you would think, you know, city resident, non-city resident, you know, off-peak time, on-peak time, you know, off-peak season, off-peak season. It doesn't, doesn't work quite that way. It's, it's a little more, more dynamic than that. I think they call it dynamic producing. Um, and at first you, you look at it, you say, well, this is hard to understand. And you look at it a little while longer and you realize it's still hard to understand. But, but there is a method for this, and I think that it's, it's, it's well thought out. And I think a couple of things that are important as we consider, you know, fee schedule for, for, you know, using the clubhouse. First of all, is that we, we've made sure that all along the way, this proposal, no matter what the situation is, whether it's a weekend or whether it's peak season or whatever, city residents, and by city residents, I mean people who live in the city and also businesses that are located here in the city, you know, will always pay the lowest rate that's available at that time. And I think that's, that's appropriate. The second thing that's important to think about is that we've tried to design this to not, not really make a profit for the city. That's not what we had in mind. But we do recognize that we have all long-term ongoing costs in this facility. We're gonna have to maintain the facility. We're probably going to have to make improvements to the facility as we learn along the way that there's something that, even though it's a beautiful facility and it's got, you look through it and say, I can't imagine anything else that needs to be in here, we will think of something. Somebody will ask us for something and we'll say, that's a great idea and we should have included that. And so we'll want to have some funds available to do that. All along, as you know, Mr. President, we've tried very hard to make sure that we did this project without paying city tax dollars into it. And so we want to continue to, you know, do as much as we can to make this project, you know, as self-sufficient as possible, including those kinds of costs. So I think this is a well-designed schedule, at least in the short term, because we've got to see how it, how it survives impact with the market, right? But, you know, I think it's well-designed. I think it's thoughtful. I think it's going to, it's something that, you know, we should give a try and we will make whatever necessary adjustments along the way as we do with other city fees that, you know, we charge for different things. So I'm, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'm pleased to be able to recommend to the adoption of this schedule and I hope that we'll get that to see it so that we can start running the process out.
Thank you, Mr. Peccararo. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this item? I'll go ahead and make, uh, just one or two brief comments. First of all, thank you. That's very thoughtful and, and, you know, it's good information with understanding how you got here. Um, I, I, I just wanted to echo to fit your comment and, and, and kind of point out two things. Number one, I don't believe we used, we used very little tax, city tax paid funds to build this facility out. It was mostly state and federal money that we were able to pour into it, which was a testament to the great work on staff's part to make that happen. Cause as you said, it was important to us to do it that way and we made it happen. So thank you for that, staff. Um, and then number two, um, I, I just, going through that facility, it's, I can't imagine that this thing isn't gonna get filled up quickly, especially once word gets out on the street. I think we are gonna have everybody in their brother. I've already had people reaching out to me wanting to know how they can get it. Can I help him get it? You know, which I know is gonna be an issue for all of us sitting up here. Um, and, uh, I, I'm very excited about this, real excited. So I can't wait to get this done so we can start getting on top of it and get it rented. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I want to echo your comments, um, you know, and the, that first event, um, last week, the Heart of the Civil War Heritage, uh, area, um, you know, it, it looks so phenomenal setup for an event inside there. And I think that it really, you know, did it justice that that was the first one to be hosted there. The setup, I even went up to the little balcony area and looked down over, um, and it, it was just so thrilling to see it being used. You know, after it had been sitting in just repair for, um, what, almost a decade? Uh, until, right, just about a decade until, um, until we got it rented, so.
Long, long, longer than that. I think it stopped being used in, what, ten, eleven?
Fifteen years? So it's been about fifteen years since that's been used in that, you know, city staff, we were able to save that building, um, and the Durbin House, right? And make it into what it is today. So, um, just to echo those comments, I can't wait to see that being used. Outstanding.
And the other, I, I will mention one other thing is I think the community really needs a facility like this right now. We, there are not a lot of options right now in Carroll County. Uh, I know the hospital recently had an event and, and nothing, not that there's anything wrong with the Ag Center, but they, it was in the Shipley Arena, uh, which is where you-
It's a townhouse.
Correct. So I, I, I think that, you know, the timing of this coming onboard is great for not only our Westminster community, but the Carroll County community because we just don't, with Martin's closing. Um, gosh, I forget how long it's been, but it's been well over a year, I think.
A couple of years.
Um, so I just think it's really timely and, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that venue used. And the other thing that's kind of cool about that venue is the setting. Now that it's a park as opposed to a golf course, it's just, it, as the park matures and all of that, it's just gonna be a lovely setting for a lot of events. Uh, the ability to go inside, outside. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing it used.
Thank you. You're welcome. And you're the only one that has a sentiment. You might as well pipe up.
So I'm, and I really didn't, I literally, well, that's okay, because it was really a little tiny paragraph on my council comments, but I didn't say anything, so. I, um, I have to echo everybody's sentiments up here. Um, touring the center was amazing to see what we up here kind of, I can't say fought for, but we envisioned a, a beautiful place that we felt was going to be perfect for the community and our staff made that happen. Um, so I'm very happy and very proud of being just that little tiny piece, um, along with my fellow colleagues, um, to be a small part of, of what is a legacy project for this community. And like, um, Mayor Becker, I was at the, the Civil War Heritage Meeting and, um, it was really cool to see it all in action to be, I, I felt like it was a mile-long charcuterie board, but it wasn't. It was huge. Um, and then just to envision a, a tent outside, you even, you know, thought to the future to, um, expand events and, you know, there's a nice little flat piece of land right outside of what is a pavilion to have a tent outside if needed for even larger events. And, um, it's just, it's a, it's a beautiful place with a, a foresight and thought. And thank you to all the staff that, that had their piece in that. Um, so I'm excited to see the prices.
Well, I, I think this is not gonna be a split vote at least, so. Good, well, then in that case, I would follow the question. All those in, no, I gotta get back to them, I'm sorry. All those, uh, in favor of adopting, adoption of Resolution Twenty Five Ten, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those oppose, the ayes have it, and we have adopted the price shot. So get that thing rented, Ms. Gruber.
And roll out the red.
They roll out the red carpet, exactly. All right, uh, we have no unfinished business. Uh, is there any unfinished business that I'm not aware of? Okay, moving on, we moved to new business and I have no new business. Is there any new business that I'm not aware of? Um, then we will move on to Departmental Reports, Ms. Simos.
Thank you, sir. Want to take a moment to thank all of the veterans. We have quite a few veterans in our workforce, many of whom work in the Public Works Department and the Police Department. So all of those employees, I just want to say thank you for your service. To the Mayor and Common Council, I want to thank you for giving the staff Veterans Day off. For me personally, this has been a, a quest my entire career, um, because I think it's important for those who have served to have the day off. And I appreciate you offering that to our employees as well. So thank you for that. We will therefore be off tomorrow. Tomorrow's a holiday, um, and city offices will be closed. Okay, I'm gonna start tonight with Public Works Department before we move around. Uh, I would, I want to echo some of your comments and thank the Public Works Department for their efforts in getting the holiday trees lit up on Main Street. We have a new, uh, company that we worked with this year. They did part of the trees last year. They've now done the entire, uh, street at Main Street. It's called Choice Plantings LLC. I think you may notice that there's a pretty big difference in, in the quality of the lights, in the, the lumens, the luminosity, the brightness of the lights. Um, it looks really spectacular and four years ago, when I asked the Public Works Department to come up with a plan to light the trees and to really make it look special, this is what I was envisioning. So I think this is the year that really gets me excited because it just looks really, it looks nice. So I want to thank the Public Works Department. I also want to thank you, Mayor and Common Council, for authorizing in the consent calendar, um, some upgrades to the crosswalks, which has been in the budget for years and years and years, but the crosswalks on Pennsylvania Avenue are gonna get an update, including the McDaniel logo in the middle of them, so that we can encourage, um, the corridor. We can acknowledge the corridor on the, on Pennsylvania Avenue. We can encourage the students to cross at those crosswalks versus mid-block crossings or elsewhere. Um, this is grant money that we are finally able to spend. We were a little bit delayed as the memo in the consent calendar indicated, um, because the Water Main Project and then the Main Street paving project backed up the Pennsylvania Avenue paving project. But we're now finally through that Tetris game and ready to move forward on those, um, crosswalks, which I think are just gonna look incredible. Um, very excited about that. All right, so let's move on to the Recreation and Parks Department. Um, I don't want to talk about this too much, but I think it's very important to acknowledge this very important moment right now with the Wakefield Development Project. Um, this is, this has, this was started long, long ago when you all worked on the master planning process before twenty nineteen, thinking about how you're gonna use this important asset in the community, outlining visions, even though you had, it didn't have necessarily anything in front of you, saying that this is exactly the one it's a little like. This is where we want to go, right? Fast forward then, we had a council that was willing to think creatively about how to get us to where we're going to. And as you've all mentioned, combining and leveraging funds. Um, we've got a senior staff who's able to find money when there seems to be no money available. Um, and honest to goodness, the, uh, the product that you have seen, all the small details that you've mentioned are, there's lots of staff involved in this, but these are really because of the expertise and the dedication of Ms. Gruber. Um, we could very easily call this the Gruber Event Center, or we won't. Of course we won't. Um, but it, it is a combination of the council's willingness, um, to leverage these funds to take a risk. We used ARCA funds that could be used in lots of other places and you chose to apply it here to help fund the master plan. It was important to you. You talked to me about this in my interview, that you wanted to figure out how to fund Wakefield. And this is one of the many ways that we were able to do that. So I want to take a moment on behalf of the entire staff to thank Ms. Gruber, uh, for her many, many, many efforts. There are so many small details that are there, but for the dedication and the vision of Ms. Gruber. So, Ms. Gruber, thank you so much. All right, let's hear about the Recs and Parks Department, ma'am.
Okay, well, allow me to just thank you for your continued support and express to you on behalf of the community that you serve, how much excitement and momentum is still moving forward. Um, so we've accomplished this wonderful milestone of bringing these, uh, facilities online and looking forward to the future, we still have the development of the trail system that is another milestone that we'll be able to celebrate. Um, and that project is fully on time and on to move. So thank you for continuing to support all of the efforts. Um, and I've had so much time to work out on the site recently and the amount of people that I encounter and run into and engage in conversation with just casually. Um, the level of gratitude that is out there among our community members is immense. And that is all thanks to you and your vision and your support of that project. So, um, kudos to you. Um, it's my pleasure to be behind the scenes and making things happen out there, so. Um, in other news, we are also moving ahead of our very important improvement in our flagship park, City Park. Um, our restroom renovation project is in full swing and as you did see, and, um, approved on the consent calendar tonight was a change order that will continue to enhance those efforts in City Park. So, um, we are very grateful for that. That is a grant-funded project through Program Open Space. And if any of you have had to use our City Park restrooms by the playground, you know how important this improvement is going to be and how much of a game changer it will be for the park user experience. So.
For the little kids.
Exactly, yes. It, it, there's a scary building to walk into for a while and I can assure you that with what we're doing right now, that won't be the case going forward. So we appreciate your support of that project. And lastly, I would just like to invite the community to, um, Eleven Longwell Avenue, the Old Armory, or the Westminster Family Fitness Center for our Veterans Day Celebration tomorrow at four PM. Thanks to Carroll Post Thirty One, they have hosted for many, many years a Veterans Day Ceremony in, um, the Old Armory. And so we'd love to see all of you out there in celebration of those who have served us. So thank you, and that concludes my report.
There any questions for Ms. Gruber?
I'm gonna make one quick comment, because it dawned on me that you were making your comments in particular. I don't belabor the point, but one thing none of us have mentioned almost through this entire process is when we acquired that property, we almost gave it away. What I mean by that is we formed a committee, and I don't know if this was before or after you came. Was it after?
It was after.
Yeah, and I'm sure you aren't happy about it.
I wasn't even invited to be part of it.
Yeah, no, I know. And I, we made a huge mistake by looking at it purely from a fiscal perspective, saying, let's basically get this thing off our plate and get some private entities to come in and run the thing. And thankfully, once we went through the process, with the combination of community feedback, which was universally negative, about doing almost everything that was, was presented to us, combined with the fact that those of us that were all council at the time realized it was just a mistake, um, we, we didn't do that. And thank God, we did. I mean, I, I look, think about what's there now versus what, what had been there, what enormous mistake we would have been making um, doing that without you being involved in it and you doing what you did and look at it now. So thank God we didn't screw the pooch too bad. Anybody, go ahead.
There, there just are so many tiny pieces to this project that we'll never be able to recognize the significance of. I remember working on a project in a different city and when people say, oh, that project's so amazing, the only thing that comes to my mind is the hose bib for building A is next to the landscaping, which was really happened because of me. Otherwise, it would have been stuck around the back and someone would have had to bring twenty feet of hose. And that's not a decision anyone but the landscaper is gonna care about, but that's there because of the decisions that I made. And I know Ms. Gruber has made endless decisions on this project that are just gonna make it easier to use and better for the public to experience. So we're really excited and I'm glad you are as well. All right, so let's move on to the Housing Department. Um, Mr. Brown, can you give us an update?
Sure.
Sure. Uh, many of you, if you've been listening to the news, heard about the government shutdown.
Really?
But one, but one of the, uh, one of the things that hit close to home had to do with the people receiving SNAP benefits. Right? And whether you know it or not, we have a hundred and ninety-six participants that receive SNAP benefits. That's a hundred and ninety-six out of two hundred and sixty-two that we have on the base. So we had the opportunity to reach out to the hundred and ninety-six. Those that had email address, that we have email addresses for, we emailed them. And those that did not have emails, we sent it through snail mail. And it, it, what we sent them was some information that were compiled by the Department, Carroll County Department of Citizen Service. And it was a great resource because it listed out every food and community resource that was available in real time in the county. It said, here, here's what's available, here's how you can get, get in touch with them. And so we sent that out, asked them to pass it on. Some of the people, uh, got back to us and told us that they really appreciated that it was gonna pass it on to others. So it was, it was, uh, it was, it was timely. It was something that was useful, and we feel that that was a great benefit to the people that we serve. So we just wanted to let you know that. I don't have anything else, Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are there any questions for the Housing Director? Hearing none, we'll move on to I T. Mr. Moore?
I have to have a report, Brian, in case you have any questions.
Any questions for I T Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the H R Department. It's Brian.
Good evening. I have no report this evening. Thank you.
I know this is not his first meeting, but it's the first time I have a chance to introduce our new Deputy City Administrator, Tom Lutwell. Tom, do you have anything for the group?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. And we'll move on to the Planning Department. Then, Mr. Depot.
Uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals, November fourth meeting was canceled as there were no applications before the board. It's been a standard for the last few months, but we are seeing an uptick on special exception applications. So that should change, um, the next few months. On November fifth, the Historic District Commission approved the post-construction application for historic renovation rehabilitation tax credit, T C twenty-five-oh-two, for two oh five East Main Street in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. Repair and replace the synthetic stucco cladding and repaint the existing building on site. H C C also continued its nation's two-hundred-and-fifty-year discussions and preparations. On November twentieth, the Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing for ordinance number twenty, twenty-five-oh-nine, P I, Plan Industrial Zone Uses and Procedures Tax Amendment. On October thirteenth of twenty-twenty-five, the Mayor and Common Council introduced the ordinance. The Planning Commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing for Annexation eighty-nine, Resolution twenty-five-oh-eight, the Knit Center Prep Condominium located at five thirty-one Old Westminster Pike. On September eighth, twenty-twenty-five, the Annexation Resolution for Annexation eighty-nine was introduced, including the annexation plan by the Mayor and Common Council, allowing the annexation process to begin. Planning Commission is also scheduled to hear Plant Site Development Plan S twenty-four zero-zero-zero-eight. Members first Federal Credit Union to construct a two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-square-foot bank and savings and loan institution on vacant property located on the eastern side of Baltimore Boulevard adjacent to the Goodwill. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. Are there any questions for the Planning Director? Hearing none, we will move on to the Finance Department. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, I don't have a report today. Thank you.
She may not have a report, but we are very, very busy in the Finance Department. Does anyone have any questions for the Finance Director? Hearing none, we will move on to the Police Department. Chief Price?
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. Oh, I have one thing, uh, this evening. I'm proud to announce that last Thursday, Captain Jones, uh, completed uh, the Maryland Police Training Commission's five-week comparative compliance course. Uh, him being an out-of-state police officer is something he had to complete to get his Maryland certification. So I'm very happy that he's back in the building. And, uh, you know, he has resumed his position as a patrol commander, and we're gonna start to get to work on some strategic plans and initiatives. That's all I have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the, uh, Chief?
Yeah, Chief.
Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mals. The final item on our meet agenda is keeping the citizen comments, considering every single person in this room's already had a chance to speak. There will be no additional comments. But if you're not here for the meeting, you can send them the comments at westminstermd.gov. Make sure you put all your information in the email. Um, that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be-